Yeah, I think we're starting the actual meeting after the budget workshop, at least that's the way.
Good evening. Is this loud enough?
A little louder.
A little louder, much louder.
Much louder. Better? Okay. Um, this is calendar, uh, which was sorting up with tonight's workshop where we'll be going over, uh, the real meat and potatoes of the budget, uh, instruction, BOSI's, uh, special ed and technology. And, uh, I'm gonna give an overall update on the, uh, budget draft. I wanted to go through the property tax cap. Uh, we recently got the BOSI's capital, uh, tax portion of their budget that we are required to pay. And New York State has declared that we are allowed to, um, utilize that as part of our capital tax levy. That meant I had to restate last year's tax levy, cause they gave me last year's amount. And then going forward, um, for the current upcoming budget year, uh, make the difference. It actually only ended up to be a small, um, net change of around $2,000. But, uh, it could in future periods be helpful. Um, I just wanted to let you know that currently our allowable tax levy is thirty-nine million, eight-hundred-and-seventy-six-thousand, five-hundred-and-twelve dollars. That amounts to three point zero seven percent, or two-one-seven, uh, percent. And, uh, we are suggesting at this time that, uh, we go for a tax levy of three percent, which is slightly under the allowable tax levy and is the difference of twenty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-and-ninety-nine dollars. My next slide is an update on the revenues. Our real, uh, revenues haven't changed much. I'm still waiting for an update on the legislative state aid currently, which is showing what the governor has proposed. It's kind of more or less fixed until we get down to where I'm utilizing the three percent tax levy that was proposed. And now, the difference of where we're gonna make it up, we believe to make it up with the ERS reserve and appropriating seven-hundred-and-fifty-thousand from fund balance. And I expect at this point in time that we'll be able to take that fund balance from the current year's, uh, differences in revenues and receipts, revenues and expenditures.
Can I ask you just a, a, a process question? At what point in the budgeting process should we have that healthy debate about how come we are moving how much money from reserves to cover our nut next year? Is it now, or should we get through the whole budget and then at the end, once we've gone through everything, talk about it?
You can introduce the concept so that we can factor in any of the issues or concerns as we go through in iterations of the budget.
I just think once we go through the whole thing, I mean, it seems like increasingly every year, we're holding down our increases by moving stuff out of our fund balance. And I, it, it's almost like triggered automatically now. And from my perspective, sometimes it's kind of almost behind the curtain, moving money without being, not that we're hiding it, but the sense of, we now, you know, if we wanna have the, the budget be here and be our increase here, we're gonna have to shift more money over. So here's how much money we've shifted over in the past four years from our fund balances. And now, here's how much we're recommending this year. I just want it to be really transparent so we can have that discussion. Does that make sense? And again, it can be at the end of the process, uh, that's probably better, at the end of the process. Cause, cause to your point, you're gonna be fine tuning the budgets you go along anyway, so it could be premature to have it now. But I think it'd be healthy just to have it so that we're all really cognizant of how much we're moving our, over from our fund balance. To, to, what, what we're really doing is to cover the, pardon the increase, right?
Without cutting anything.
Right.
And that keeps the, um, the tax levy
Right.
within the balance, and it also allows you to keep your unappropriated fund balance at the forty cent.
Right.
Which is what the state is comfortable with.
Right.
But it makes assumptions that we're not looking to tighten the budget or cut anything. Just assume full budget with funding it by reserves.
But as, as we go through all the iterations of the budget, we're constantly reviewing the factors that go into the ter- determination of the expenditures to try to keep if, and you'll see as we go along, we, we will be reducing certain estimates as we get more information and determine that we might not, and, and I think you'll see with some of the projections that, uh, the estimates have been reduced if we determine that in fact we don't need to, uh, estimate certain expenditures for the following, cause the goal was always to keep the budget, uh, as reasonable as possible without cutting programs and yet applying whatever is necessary to the new mandates and the new changes and the new starters. It's always a balance.
I would say the revenue picture will change again slightly. As I said, we haven't gotten the legislative, um, proposal. Legislative proposal is the one that usually, uh, holds. And I would expect that we would get somewhat more than we are getting currently from the governors.
Can I just ask a question on the non-resident tuition?
Yes.
With the lower number, is that just being conservative, or is there a reason to think that's gonna go down?
I do have reason to believe that's going to go down, mainly because we do have another school that is opening up, uh, their doors to, um, non-resident students. So I do think that there's a good possibility that some of the students that are currently coming will go to another school. And I know another school district, some of the parents have been pushing, um, for that opportunity also to go to a different school district.
And we have, we have met, the principals have met with all the parents, and we've met with the sending districts and the parents who place their children, yeah, some are graduating, you know, different circumstances, some may move, some may move into the district and no longer be, you know, paying tuition. So, we're actually reviewing child by child what the expectations-
You met with all the parents of-
We're talking about, with the principals know the families and know the discussions of people who might be determining that they might move into the district, or they might be thinking of changes, or a child graduates. So, we're actually looking child by child to estimate, do we think this child will continue to be here? And will child continue to be, uh, you know, okay, on tuition?
And so it looks like you're expecting about a twenty percent decrease?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, this is the new proposed budget expenditures. Um, I did this by major, uh, groups. Uh, you can see that, uh, the different portions of the budget administrator has gone up roughly a hundred-and-twenty thousand. Uh, programs for students have gone up nine-hundred-and-thirty-four thousand, nine-hundred-and-eighty-eight dollars. Employee benefits, six-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, two-hundred-and-eighty-one. That's primarily in the areas of pension. Uh, both the ERS and TRS pensions have gone up, uh, five percentage points this year. It's not over the two percent that would allow us to use as a cap in our tax levy, but it's still a significant increase, um, to our budget. The last portion of the budget is capital, and our debt service is, uh, the leading, uh, decrease there. One of our bonds is finishing up this year. We will be going out to bond to, uh, take over the bands, but at this point, we're expecting that our payments will come in lower, and, uh, we'll reap some savings there.
Uh, Laura?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you for highlighting the major increases on the employee benefits for retirement and the workers' comp. Um, do you know what the drivers are to have such enormous increase? I mean, increasing by, you know, one's almost fourteen percent, the other's forty-six percent?
Well, we're gonna have two, you know, increases. One is gonna be the actual percentage points that the actual pension plan is, of course, you know, charging us. And that's based on a five-year rolling average, it's done by annuities. And, uh, even though we're in a currently, well, not today, I mean, our stock market is down, but they're basically doing, well, on an annuity basis looking out. So both the ERS and the TRS have an increase in percentage points. And then salaries go up, you know, whatever proportion of the salaries go up, you're gonna pay that percentage of an increase also.
And is this locked regardless of what happens to the stock market between now and budget date?
Yes.
So this is done, so-
This is done.
And this was, and this was set when the market was robust?
Yes.
Thank you.
This is a slide that goes over our instructional and our non-instructional salaries. I did it by function code, so, uh, these are the main areas of the budget. The major thing I wanted to show, the board has more of the details of the actual code, but all in all, we only have a two-point-five-five percent increase. So that includes all anticipated, um, raises. So I, basically, the instructional and the non-instructional salaries are pretty much all related to increases in the, uh, cost of living and contractual obligations. Um, these are a listing of our BOSI's expenditures. Um, we use BOSI's in various, uh, areas of the budget, some of them because it is most cost-effective for us to go to BOSI's for a service. Otherwise, uh, we also get BOSI's aid on it, so sometimes even if we're paying a little bit more on a BOSI service, we'll actually get back more money from the state for using a centralized service. Uh, our BOSI's this year, we're anticipating an actual, a slight decrease, right? And, um, the BOSI's codes, I just got the final numbers, alright, of what they're projecting for cost for next year. And I will be going over more of the BOSI's details with the, uh, individual department heads. So these numbers may vary, uh, within, uh, area codes, but the overall budget should be really, uh, how it appears currently. I just wanted to show the current fund balances and reserves. This is what the fund balances and reserves are to take. This includes the ERS amount that we used this year. So, we used approximately four-hundred-plus-thousand out, so that reserve shows a lower figure in there for that. It also shows the lower figure for the amount used for the fleet capital reserve. Uh, this is the four percent of our current budget, the one thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifteen, uh, one thousand, one million, seven-hundred-and-fifteen-thousand, three-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars. And that is what the state recommends that we hold to offset any potential, uh, unknowns or contingent liabilities that happen during the year. That's an overall update for the budget, is there any questions?
Yeah, I had a question. Okay, find the page here. I'm on the, so, one, two, three, fourth page.
Okay.
I was just looking at the transfer to special aid fund lunch fund.
Yes.
Can you talk about that one, Anna?
Okay. Um, I went back last year and the year before and-
Can you scroll back on the page, so everybody can see which one, thanks.
You see, last year, darn the card, you know, we put in for ninety-five thousand to special aid and lunch fund. This year, it's increasing by a hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand. That is mainly due to the lunch fund, and the lunch fund, um, we have several people now who are requesting benefits, alright? So, a family plan is failing high, and even though some of the people pay up to fifty percent of the plan, other people are paying up to, uh, thirty-five percent of the costs themselves in that particular fund. We're still, um, that's a, a major cost to the cafeteria fund. The other items to think about cafeteria is the, the quality of the food that we're serving and, uh, things that we're using to serve the children with, like, uh, special compostable silverware and the, um, cardboard trays, and a lot of the products that we're using are very costly products, and it does cost money. At this point, we're charging over four dollars for a lunch. I don't think that it's, uh, cost-effective really for the students to be paying more. And I think that, you know, this, the general fund is gonna have to pick up the cost of paying the difference of a high-quality meal, that the district has decided that this is what they wanna provide to their students. If you change your mind with another, you know, we could go to processed foods and some of the other things that other school districts use to, um, cut the cost in the program.
Um, this is off-topic, but Brittany, didn't you say that the wellness committee was thinking about a dishwasher? Cause I'm wondering, like, just like looking at that line item, and if, if compostable silverware, which we don't even know is gonna get composted, right? Is one of the components, it sounds like one of the things that's driving that is, um, employee benefits in the cafeteria? Is that my understanding?
Yes.
And then the other piece of it might be these disposable products, even though they're not plastic, they're still-
And then, a lot of our higher-quality products, we are using local, um, products. You know, we're not shipping products in from, you know, state, at a state if we had a choice. So a lot of the how, you know, the higher-quality products are gonna cost more money. The local products are gonna cost, you know, more money, so-
But from a long-term standpoint, it might be more fiscally conservative if we actually buy silverware and a dishwasher than-
I'm pretty sure when Jenny did her budget, she-
Put that in there.
She requested that there was a dishwasher in there and a, also reusable utensils and plates and trays.
Perfect, yes, thank you.
How much did the, um, the, uh, disposable silverware and other dishes, whatever, we used this year, how much did that cost us?
I would have to get back to you on that, cause that's like a-
Cause it seems like that, that was one of the big drivers of the cost, and I'm just, I think when it first came, when we first became aware of it, after it had been done, I had asked questions and was told during the budgeting process, I asked for presentation of the cafeteria, I was told we would get it during the budgeting process. So, um, it'll be helpful to have that information because it seems like we s- we might've wasted money doing that and instead could have done something smarter. So I just wanna challenge us not to be, um, theoretically, it's a good idea, but it would've, it may have turned out to fiscally be a foolish thing that we did. And so, um, I would just ask that we scrutinize these decisions to a greater degree going forward.
Okay.
Even though the intent is good, and I, I mean, I think we all want our, our children and staff to be eating healthy product. I still think we have to scrutinize the costs. And I love buying locally, but I don't know if we can ac- ask every taxpayer to underwrite buying local products? If it's a similar product and it's gonna cost twice as much, as much as we wanna support the local economy, we also have to do it through the lens of what's fiscally responsible for all of the citizens in the community. So, I, again, I just wanna make sure that we're not operating this under a premise that we did not have really all discussed and necessarily had heard from the public and all agreed to. So, I think we need to have that conversation, because the amount that the district is covering for that program continues to go up and up and up without us really pressure-testing it publicly.
I will say that we are looking at dishwasher. I have had, uh, two dishwasher proposals on my desk at this time. Uh, one, I think that we probably will go for, it's a, a non-vanishing dishwasher. It will make the kitchen a little bit hotter, but, uh, it costs a lot less to install, there's a lot less work, you know, that we don't have to do as far as piping, so we are definitely looking into it. And, you know, we're definitely proponent of trying to make it more cost-effective wherever we can.
The, um, the presentation, the, the documents that we were emailed about the budget included more detail. In several years past, what was presented was the line budget like this. And it seems like we're just presenting the summaries this year, but I would, I would request, and, and I didn't know that we weren't presenting this tonight, cause we didn't get the presentation ahead of time, we got the di- I assumed that what was being presented were the, were the, um, detailed presentation. So I request that we do that because, um, while things may not show up in that roll-up, there are some things that pop up here that I think, for, I'm sure have good explanation, but that the public and board should understand the explanation, so that there's a better understanding of what the, what we're all gonna be endorsing or not endorsing and voting on and not voting for. Um, so I have a couple of questions about the details, like that we received, based on that, cause like I said, I didn't know we were going, going through that. So on page three of the nine pages we got under the maintenance, there was a hundred-and-twenty-five thousand dollars added to the proposed budget, that didn't show up at that line item, and it said special project DW.
Okay, District Board. DW is District Board.
Mm-hmm.
We were gonna go over that in, uh, the following, uh, you know, board, uh, the budget workshop, of course, we're not doing, um, you know, that particular portion of the budget tonight.
Alright, then we'll do that another time.
Okay.
But I, I assumed that everything that you emailed us for this meeting, we were going through this meeting.
No, I, I went and emailed you everything that was the entire budget of what we have today. This is for draft two, you have everything.
Okay, alright, then I'll hold up the other questions.
Okay. Anything else?
Um, instruction, I'm gonna be next.
So before we get into the, going over the elementary, middle, and high school budget, I thought it would be worthwhile to just give you a quick, uh, overview of what we do in terms of formulating our budgets with the teachers every year. Uh, our budgets are comprised of basically supplies, equipment, textbooks, uh, contractual, and field trips. And so what happens is, because of the timing and, of the budget, it really is our best estimate of what we're going to, uh, or what the teachers think they're going to need for the following year. So what happens is, we send out a letter to the teachers, uh, in and around the end of November, saying, we're starting the budget process. Here's a budget folder, what I'd like you to do is, um, schedule a meeting with, in my case, Brittany and myself, and Matt, Matt's case, uh, himself. And they come in, the teachers, usually sometime towards, uh, the end of December, just prior to break. They sit down with us and they go over, uh, what they anticipate needing, um, for the following school year. And we will question them about their anticipated needs, but it's not an exact science at that point, because number one, they don't know what their schedules are exactly going to be, we don't know what course enrollments are gonna be. And in fact, we really can't place the orders until May or June, when the budget passes. So in years past, for those of you who've been around for a while, we used to, at this time, present the detailed numbers. So we would sit down with faculty, uh, in December and go over every line item. But what we found, and we made a switch about eight years ago, was that was not that worthwhile a process to the extent that the prices would change by the time the orders were placed in May. So what we do now is, we sit down with them, we go through essentially the same process, but it's very important for us to state that it's, that it's a, it's, at the end of the day, a pretty detailed estimate. And so then what happens is that the budget passes and I'm allocated, let's just say, two thousand and forty-two dollars for supplies. I have those two thousand and forty-two dollars to work with. I generally have an idea of what I'm gonna order, but I actually have to put the orders in the cart and in their process, and I do that in there, Jim. Any questions about that? Okay. So, Mr. Malone?
So I'm gonna, I'm gonna start things off. Good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mr. Nichols, for, for the intro and kind of explaining the process. Um, as, as actually Ms. Teis just, just mentioned tonight, what you'll see from, from the two buildings, as well as the, um, Special Education Department and Technology is a summary slide, which will kind of give you the summation of the various categories and will, um, give you some explanation about each of those components, and of course, answer any questions. Just, um, putting together this summary, summary slide the other day, I, my first reaction when I wrote these bullets was kinda like, eh, it's a little bit vanilla.
Same thing every year.
But then, but then I thought a lot about it, because I, I think it's, it's actually very significant, because it's taken us a long time to build the program that, you know, I'm very proud of, and I think as a community, we should be really proud of, in all the buildings, but speaking of the elementary school. And it's been something that's been led by this school board. So there were years ago that some of these bullets read, adding a Spanish teacher, and then adding a second Spanish teacher, expanding our art offering, um, adding to the musical experience that kids have. And as a community, we've, we did, um, debate about those things, and when possible, we made decisions to install those programs. And through some of the recent, you know, challenged, more challenging fiscal times, we've been able to sustain that. And that's, you know, that's a tribute to all of us. Everybody's worked together hard to really watch our spending at the building level very carefully, maintain the program we're really proud of. It's a, it's a rich academic foundation that we provide our children, but in addition, we make sure that all of their different learning styles are catered to. You that have children at the elementary school know, every day, they, they have a great offering in arts and music, phys ed, field trips that we're allowed to send our children on, only enhance that, the after-school offering, so, you know, I'm kind of, I'm a cheerleader for what we do there, but really, it's a, it's a thanks to the community for, um, continuing to support that. In addition, the, um, the class sizes at the elementary school have been maintained at an average of about eighteen. And I, I think that too is significant, because it, if you think about that learning environment, the teachers really get to know the children well. We, you get to know them as individuals, we're then able to better cater to their needs, whether they need extra help, whether they need, um, more assistance in learning the English language, whether they would benefit from a push in certain areas. Those, those things are, um, enhanced when we're able to have those smaller class, class environments. And then this budget also makes sure that we're continuing to train, we have a very hol- highly qualified staff, but we always wanna make sure that they're, they're up to date with, um, what's, what's best practice, making sure that things we're doing in the classrooms are as, as best aligned with the standards that do change often. We're going through that change right now with the next generation standards. But just to give some visuals to, you know, some of the thoughts, um, the science program that the elementary school students have. This year, we have our physics fair at grades four and five, and they're a great hit, a, a change to what we have been doing and in alignment with the expectations of the new standards. The great music offerings, uh, which lead into the programs up here at Pearson. So Wax Museum, which is, which is upcoming, actually, next Friday, good to give that a plug. The phys ed offering, I think, is, is great, what we do in the building, but we also get the children having to the community, whether it be somewhere, somewhere like Buckskill, or, um, the swim program, which has become an institution at our school and a great part of, of what we do. Is this some, some additional science pictures? And then getting to the, the actual summation slide, so as Mr. Nichols said, what you're going to see from the building principals tonight is equipment, the contractual lines, supplies and textbooks. That's, uh, presented across the top, and then underneath that would be the salary lines. So, looking at, looking at the elementary, you can see that we identified some areas where we felt, based on requests from the teachers, um, asking them to look at their particular program and let us know what they needed, and then also taking a careful look at, at recent spend- And then also taking a careful look at, at recent spending. You're always looking at year to year spending. There were some areas where I felt it was, um, possible that we could find some savings. So those are presented in the chart, in the textbook line. For the last few years, to be specific, I had requested some enhancement of the guided reading libraries in the various classrooms. And we kind of set that as a project for the last few years and we've been able to satisfy that. So that, that's reflected in that deduction there. The, um, the equipment, the equipment, year to year, we're always looking to make sure that obviously things are safe. We have the equipment that's needed to support the programs. And then, um, we wanted to make sure that we had enough to, um, put into the new building when that opens and make sure those programs are supported as they should be. Any, any question, questions across the top or?
So, um, can you remind me, is, are subscriptions to like IXL and stuff, do those come under textbooks? Or are they not even in the elementary school budget or in tech or?
Most, most of that is in tech, so something like IXL would be in tech. Subscriptions from the, from the library would be in our, our conference contractual line. That also represents field trip spending. It would also be a line that would support professional development coming into the building, whether it be in math or ELA during the year. Even the, um, health offices, we, we have contracts with some of the local physicians to help with physicals and, um, working through those things. So, so that, that's kind of a big summation.
My question is then probably to be held until we talk about the tech stuff, but just kind of to, um, touch on it. I, so my understanding is that obviously teachers in different classes have different technology, technological needs.
Absolutely, right.
So not every student in every class is going to have access to the same things.
Correct.
But I also know that in some cases, it might be great if students had access, right? So for example, like I know, like, my daughter had, did not have IXL in one year, she had it the next year. But other students that didn't have it that next year still used it because they found it to be a helpful tool and they use it just at home.
Sure.
Um, and my understanding is that, and I, I don't know if I feel strongly one way or the other, but my understanding is like, I feel that in Southampton, they give all the kids access to all of them.
I believe there, there are definitely programs used, like, say Southampton as an example. I think there are grade levels where.
Everybody gets.
Everybody would use something like an IXL.
And I think that.
Or a Castle Learning.
We don't want to have subscriptions for more seats than we're going to use.
Correct.
But it would be interesting to kind of explore that a little bit, just.
Yeah, and, and I think, um, it also would be, it would be a, a larger discussion about, you know, how are we as a school district presenting our curriculum?
Yep.
So the, um, the IXL, to stay with that example, in many of the elementary classrooms, this is a math, um, if you're not familiar with it, it's a, a math, um, what would you call it, a math program that.
Interactive.
Interact, students can go on, work on various modules, the teachers can see their progress, tailor it. It's fabulous. In the elementary building, speaking of just elementary, not all teachers use it. Not all teachers feel they have the, the need for it. It is as great as it is, but that could be a larger discussion, maybe at certain grade, grade levels, everybody should use it.
Yeah, I mean, I was just.
Could I ask a question?
There's someone saying, so are you saying in the same grade, some teachers opt to use it as a teaching tool and some do not?
So some, some may use it as an example with, um, evening homework. And some do not.
So, yeah, I think that would be an interesting educational, even though it's a technology expense.
Sure.
And maybe it's not for tonight, but it may be interesting educational, because it seems almost philosophical. Like, do you want consistency of certain learning and tools available if they're best agreed based on the curriculum? Because the curriculum is basically the same for every class in a grade.
That's correct.
So then, what's the decision tree on what tools you best leverage to, to instruct and support that curriculum?
Right.
And that, I mean, again, it seems like it's a conversation for a different night, but if you're bringing up an interesting philosophical conversation.
Yeah, and it, and I think that conversation, we're only going to have that more as the, the various technologies come our way.
Yeah, and the only reason why I bring it up is because I wasn't sure when you're asking the teachers what their needs are, if you also ask them like, this, this third grade teacher uses IXL, we noticed you don't. Do you have a need for it? Like, do you spur the, you know?
So Scott, I know Scott will be able to speak to this in more detail, but some of those subscriptions are even like district wide subscriptions. So we have access to it. And you have your teachers who are, they, um, call them like the early adopters. They, they get a introduction to it, they love it, they run with it. And then you have others who have different styles and, um, different techniques that work just as well. And they maybe are a little more reticent with it, but it's a, it's a good discussion to have.
I, I mean, my understanding is with the IXL, it's also a tool for like students that want to do additional homework, right?
It can serve, it can serve that way. And that to me is, that's an important philosophical question. Do we want, do we want that?
Right, well, I was, my understanding is also, I know, at least I was told, there's, there's a classroom where the teacher did not have the budget for IXL, I guess, so she found a free option, which was ZERN, which apparently is just as, or students law, so.
I think, yeah, I mean, what I, this is what I would say to that, um, generally.
I think that person probably just didn't know to ask for it.
Correct, and, and, and what I would say is, um, and I know I echo what probably Brittany and Jeff have said many times. And, and this is something we should be really proud of, again. In this district, if, if a teacher asks for that and comes to us with a rationale, I, I can't think of a time I've said it.
And it also seems like we're a district that from classroom to classroom, we afford the instructor the flexibility as long as, you know, there are, there are positive results, the flexibility to approach the, the educational experience from different perspectives.
Yeah, and, and absolutely right, I think something that we value. However, there are, there are specific examples, like in the area of literacy, sometimes there's non-negotiables. And so for example, we, at the elementary school, installed the benchmark assessing K to five. That's not an option. You know, even if, even if an instructor said, well, I like this assessment, well, that's, that may be okay, but this is what we are doing, K to five, because in this area, we've made the decision that this is the.
Well, you need a multitude of that.
Consistency, and you want to see that progress all the way through. The IXL could serve us well, like, I, I haven't, um, looked into it as in depth, but it's a good, it's a good discussion to have.
I have no expertise or knowledge, it was just something I noticed that was a variance.
No, I agree, no, no, but it's, it's a good question. Because if we were, and again, Scott could speak better to this, is, you know, how we spend those monies. And, um, if we find a tool, maybe that should be an example that we just have everyone deal with at certain grade levels.
Well, I think the other thing to realize is that, like, technology is so ubiquitous now and there's so much free stuff out there.
Yeah.
One teacher might be like, oh my gosh, Splash Math, have you found it does the most amazing thing? And then she just loves it. And then the girl next door is just like, well, I've been using.
That, that's exactly what's happening.
ZERN and it's been fantastic and that, and it's like, oh, well, I like it for this, well, I like this for this. And then they just kind of run with it.
Right.
And the kids like different ones better too.
Right, and so.
Yeah, that's true.
I don't, I don't know that there's like any sort of, everybody should be doing all the same thing. And I like that the teachers have the flexibility to do what they want. I think maybe the broader picture is like, is everybody aware of what's available to them?
That's, that's kind of what I was more getting at, like.
Right, right.
Do the parents know that these tools are available that are out there and free, like that?
That's a good question.
Yes, that's kind, yeah.
Well, and also do our, our instructors supported to have the comfort level to leverage the tools that might advantage the students. Because some who have been instituted, institutional teacher for a long time and have, you know, they have different, different levels of adoption.
Have a, right. Yeah, and then that would be where that, that, um, training monies come in. And that's something we have to continue, continue to talk about.
I think it's a great idea for another evening, I think we should let math continue on his.
Yeah.
Yeah.
The numbers.
Budget presentation, just so we can.
No, yeah, that, that's fine, we're happy to talk about it at another time.
Question about the numbers.
Yes.
It's rare that we see the instructional, non-structural salary number going down.
Yep.
Is that because we've had retirements and newer teachers are coming in or can you just?
Well, so, so the, moving to the bottom, actually, let me just speak to the, quickly, the decreases at the top. And just because I want clarity for everybody that may be tuning in. The decreases that are represented, remember that top, those top few lines are the summation of basically like everything in the regular head side of the elementary school. So administrative supplies as an example, the health office supplies, um, all the, um, support personnel in the building. Often their numbers are there. But the instruction, the instructional monies, those are not going down. I was able to capture some, um, areas where we could lower the costs in, say, the administrative supply line. Like I mentioned, buying those textbooks, schoolwide, uh, we made some adjustments there. Speaking to the salaries, um, there were some found captures because we had in last year's budget, some, um, positions approved in the nineteen twenty budget. And then those, um, employees retired.
So then you hire you at a different scale.
At a different scale.
Right.
Or, or if, if it's possible, we're reflecting hard on whether it, not it needs to be replaced. In those cases, it was at a, at a newer salary, a lower salary, um, and that's reflected there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So just like Mr. Malone said, um, we at Pearson were able to do a lot and we've maintained a lot, but we're also going to keep growing because we want to be the best and we are competitive. So for the first, so we're continuing to enrich the learning experience, right, for all of our students. So our international baccalaureate program, our alternative to our IB middle years program, the preparing learners for a new tomorrow, our plant, and then our character education. These times for our children are a little bit different than when we grew up. Our social emotional well-being is a very important structure that we need to have in place in school. And we would like to continue that endeavor to make sure that we're supporting all our kids. We are lucky to be at SAG Harbor because we get to know each and every student individually and have relationships with them. And it is one of the strengths of our small school and our small community and it brings us together. So that is one of our important factors. Professional development wise, our international baccalaureate program, there are some changes to that program that Mr. Nichols is going to touch upon. Our next generation learning standards, which are, all of our teachers have been professionally developed in, but we need to continue going just because, right, as I said before, we're competitive and want the best region scores. Our plant program, as much as yes, we're going to be finally into the phase of our third phase of it, so that we're going to do our plant three and our first cohort's going to finish the ninth, the twenty, twenty-one school year as eighth graders. We still want to make some changes and make sure that we're, um, tweaking it to the best of our ability and we're going to continue doing that. And then of course, diversity and inclusion is a huge thing, especially here as we even have a committee on it. So that's another goal. And then as I spoke again, the social motion piece, which we are really, um, hitting home on. Mr. Nichols?
So just to touch upon IB, Brittany had mentioned professional development. I would say about eighty percent of our, uh, the funds that are allocated to professional development are directed towards IB professional development. And what that means is that basically you have teachers go away to, well, they can do it one of a couple of ways. They can go away for a couple of days to an IB conference and they're usually category one, category two or category three, with category three being the most, uh, the most complicated, if you will, category one being introduction. And they're either in specific disciplines, so you could have it in social studies, science, math, uh, or a language. Or it can be administrative or it can be coordination. So it's not unusual for probably between five and ten teachers to go away per year to those conferences. Sometimes it's just for continued professional development without a specific change in the curriculum. Other times, uh, as is the case with math next year, there's a significant change in the course offering, which necessitates the teachers who are going to be teaching that, um, they need to be trained. And so that's what those monies are, are set aside for. With regard to diversity and inclusion, Brittany touched on that, but budget wise, you know, we have some funds to bring in some speakers to expand upon the work that the diversity and inclusion, uh, committee has been focusing on, um, over the past year. And then with regard, I don't know how to scroll down on this, whoops. It's sort of cut off, but there are two staff increases. Uh, one is it'll be in draft three, it's not in tonight's, which is a halftime increase in ENL, English as a New Language. And I touched upon this before, but basically we have two, um, two issues, uh, two dynamics with regard to that portion of our population. Number one, the ENL population in subtotal is increasing, so there's been an increase in the number of students. Secondly, we've had an increase in the number of students with formal, uh, with interrupted formal education, CIF students. And those students who might be sixteen or seventeen years old with two or three years of formal education, bring with them a whole new set of challenges. And that has staffing implications in terms of how to meet their needs. And that's why we're asking for the point five. And that point five, uh, request grew out of discussions that Brittany, Mr. Guinan, myself and Mr. Malone had with our ENL staff, talking about, uh, how we were going to best meet, uh, the instructional needs of those new learners in our community. Secondly, the, the one point O mathematics increase, uh, that really is geared towards increasing instructional time in year two and year three of the high school, uh, three-year sequence, which is geometry and algebra two. So, um, our math department chair, we had asked him to, uh, actually, he took it upon himself and then we had subsequent discussions where he did some further investigation. He looked at how high achieving districts were, how much time they were allocating to instruction in geometry and algebra two. And what he found was that generally, they were offering fifty percent more instructional time than we were. So they were getting, uh, seven and a half periods of instructional time a week versus what we were offering, which was five. So that increase of one point O will enable us to offer a seven and a half periods of instruction for, uh, geometry and algebra two, which depending on when you take it, is usually ninth and tenth grade or tenth and eleventh grade. Any questions on this slide? These are some pictures, Brittany, you want to speak in?
Just to show you what great things we do. I'll be the schmoozer. So our, our middle school musical that every seventh grader gets prepared in CPR, it's a great offering that we have. These are our character education, right? So all of our middle schooler and some of our high school students do this cooperative education field trip, which we are able to offer them. And then of course, our spirit nights that our kids get to enjoy so that we have opportunities for them after school hours to be in the school environment in a positive, exciting way besides academics. Team building activities, this is color wars during our red, annual red ribbon week. And then here are some of our high school kids. Our art programming is amazing here, it's influential, especially on some of our kids' lives that didn't realize they wanted to be artists and now know they can. Our model UN program, which they were able to go to Harvard this year. And then here are some pictures of our students just working in our library, doing their thing. And then of course, our sports programming as well. And our senior class. Which is my first sixth grade class, I do.
So big picture, uh, just, I'll go over this slide in a sec, but we're a very special, uh, sixth and twelve school in that we offer a comprehensive educational program with basically seventy kids, seventy students a grade. That's rare. There are not many schools in New York State that would have an AP, um, an advanced placement program with twelve or thirteen courses that only had two hundred and eighty students in a high school. And conversely, since we're an IB school, there's only one other IB school on an island that's comparable to ours, Dubs, very in size, that offers the IB diploma program. So with that commitment comes expense. Because what you're doing is you're making a commitment to have advanced courses without necessarily the number of students that a bigger high school would have. Since you have smaller class sizes, when you get into the upper level courses. Having said that, um, this is somewhat redundant for you, you just went over this with the elementary school, but when you add up sixth and twelve, our percent change, equipment, uh, conference contractual, supplies, textbooks, comes to a little less, or a little more than one-third of one percent, uh, year year increase, uh, nineteen twenty to twenty twenty-one. And then the salaries, uh, which included the one point O math, but not the point five ENL that will be in draft three, comes to just shy of three percent. Any questions about this page?
On the IB classes, all, are kids paying for their own books or do we, the school supply all those?
We will be supplying, in last year and the year before, uh, we supply all the books except in the English classes, where they were expected to buy some novels, paperback novels, because they were marking them up. But in this year's budget, we set aside monies, to pay for everything.
And we pay for all the assessments. And we pay for all the assessments.
Yeah.
That's huge.
Another significant thing is that we pay roughly eighty to ninety thousand a year to pay for AP and IB assessments.
A lot of schools don't do.
Yeah, some schools will require the students to pay, some schools, as Pearson did about fifteen years ago, will have a hybrid situation where the kids pay for some exams, or the families pay for some exams, or the school does, we pay for all of them.
I was going, I actually think it was important that the school was covering all of that, so.
Yeah, most definitely.
You had mentioned at the beginning of the year that you were going to look into whether to continue to have one or two, I can't remember, was it AP government class or I, is it, you're going to still have it? Or is it still?
At this point, we, the classes that would be in question would be AP statistics, AP government. And AP statistics, we haven't decided yet, well, we're going to, it's going to largely depend on the number of course requests that come in.
Right, just enrollment related, right?
Right, and performance based. And that's more, that's more relevant to AP government. It's always good to have a rigorous course, but if over a three or four year period, your students aren't performing at the level that you think they should perform, then maybe it's time to evaluate whether or not to offer that moving forward. But again, the IB program and the introduction of the IB program definitely impacted the type of student who's accessing our AP courses.
Thank you for this. I've got two questions. One is, you know, the pendulum swings back and forth on conversations of consolidation and not consolidation with the surrounding district. But that aside, there's always, we always want to think about other opportunities for shared services. And I wonder, are we having dialogue with our sister districts like, and I'm just throwing this out there, I don't know anything about that curriculum per se, but a school district like Bridgehampton, where we think our grade sizes are small, theirs are tiny, and they're offering less, is shorter than ours. And, you know, what do we do now in shared services and is there an opportunity to do more? Because some of our classes are quite small, but we still want to make sure that we offer enough to appeal to the different students we have. So, is there, do we have, do you think there's more opportunity to do that?
Over the years, there, at different times, there have been different iterations of that discussion. So, there were times where it's as simple as shared services, like you just discussed. There are other times there have been discussions, like, could Pearson be the IB school? And another district could be a trade school, or, you know, something like that. I think those discussions can continue to happen. My experience is that they're hard to.
To institute.
To institute. For instance, one of the discussions, like, do we want to take the best and brightest from other schools to sit in our IB diploma courses? Yeah, it would be nice for us, but are the other districts really going to want to do that? Send their best and brightest here for, you know, seventy or eighty percent of their courses. But again, I think those discussions are worthwhile to have, because the landscape changes and the urgency to have those discussions also is directly related to the economic conditions that prevail at a given time. Any other questions? Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
And if I could add also, on the discussion of consolidation, over the last twenty-five years, there have been a number of studies and discussions amongst the districts. And the end result of all the studies typically is that there is not actually a savings in money. There's been a risk redistribution that those districts that have the greater property wealth end up bearing more of the change and the districts with the low property wealth benefit, but there actually is not savings in the total cost.
Yeah, there was a forum in Southampton on this, I want to say, must have been like eight, seven or eight years ago. Maybe it was before that, because I think it was before the tax cap. And they had the Postys expert who oversees consulting about consolidation. They're almost local politicians, because it was a Kentucky consolidation within Southampton Town that didn't pass. And they just talked about how, even if you get to the point of a referendum, they almost always fail because they don't have an economic balance that's beneficial to both parties and there's no fiscal incentive by the state to try to help facilitate it. So, it wasn't really, I'm not advocating for that or not. It was more just a shared services idea. There's tiny classes in some of our IB. We have a sister district that has tiny classes and not as many offerings. Is there an opportunity? And therefore, it's just more cost effective. And when you have that, then you also can even expand your offering, because you're populating more seats and so, you've got economies of scale. So, it was really from that perspective, then, are we going to get married with somebody else and live together?
All right, so, good evening, I'm Carleen Mears, Personnel Personnel Services Director. And I'm taking this opportunity to give you a sneak peek at a little project that I've started. And these are some of the pictures we've been collecting regarding the project that we're calling Who We Are. And it's a project celebrating neurodiversity and affinity-based learning. So, more to come on that. I hope I piqued your interest a little bit and we'll talk a little bit more about that some other time. So, when we, when we spoke, when I spoke last year about the budget, one of the things I emphasized is moving from that reactive framework to proactive, and that's that integrated approach. So, you'll see that's still highlighted and supported in the budget that I've proposed to Personnel Personnel Services. One of the things is we're emphasizing a proactive approach to supporting students who learn differently. One of the things we were able to set up is transition coordination and post-secondary planning, which actually goes back to that project on Who We Are. We all have to have different pathways and strengths-based ideas for what we want to do with our lives. So, one of the things we've been able to do through transition coordination was we've been able to align all the IEPs with a coordinated set of activities through Naviante and the work that our school counselors are doing, and aligned it with the general education overall population. So, we have programs of studies aligned that post, good solid post-secondary opportunities. We redesigned all the level one and level two assessments for students, for transition services. And we did accomplish increasing OPWDD, which is Office of Persons with Developmental Disabilities applications, and also access VR applications. And remember, when I spoke, I don't know if you remember, it was a long time ago, but we spoke about being able to do that to bring appropriate resources out to the East End. If our families are not applying for these services to support, they're not going to bring the qualified personnel out here. So, one evidence that this is happening and we've already started to move that, together with the other directors in the area, is we are going to be hosting the first OPWDD front door orient, mandatory orientation here in SAG Harbor in April.
Can you just explain what that, what that means?
Sure, so basically, in order to apply for services, so OPWDD will follow a child all the way throughout their life once they're eligible. It's a very challenging process for families to go through. With the addition of the transition coordinator that we hired, that person has now a liaison to get those applications submitted. Addition, it's a need in the area too, in the region. So, the more applications we get through, the more opportunity. They'll notice that we have the need out here. When families aren't applying for these services, then, then there's less demand. So, supply and demand is basically what it is. And sometimes, parents give up because of the process that they have to follow. So, the state has established front door in order to get access quickly. And one of the things is mandatory orientation, which our families would have to drive all the way up to Hoplog, I believe, in order to attend that. As a matter of fact, I've gone with a parent to do that. It's quite a haul for some of our parents to access that. And you cannot apply, finish your application without that orientation. So, the nice thing is we've brought it here and we can open up that to our area districts, families to apply, to, you know, attend. Does that make sense? Okay. Also, to support clear articulation of multi-tiered systems of support. So, back to Mr. Malone's side, he has this, he know, they know what they do, they've done it for a long time. And what we're trying to do now is shine that light on it and how it supports students with different learning needs. And what we try and do is kind of match that in order to reduce CSE referrals and increase general education supports, which I think we do really well on. And then, the integrated approach. So, if you notice, when we've done, the last presentation we did, I pretty much interjected throughout with the work and supporting the work of our administrators throughout the district. And the last piece is, and one I didn't have out here, is the assistive technology. So, we're building a resource for assistive technology. And that, what triggered that is the conversation we had about, you know, the types of access we have to things that support, like co-write or predictive soft software. And some of that software, we've been able to work with Scott and say, we already have that built into some of Google Suite. So, that's been awesome. So, we want to highlight that and get that out to teachers, so they know, not just that it's fantastic, but it's effective and efficient. So, we know it's evidence-based. The other piece is the budget allocates resources to match and evidence-based support. And this is a key feature for this particular budget, because you're going to see a significant increase in tuition, because sometimes, a student's needs are complex. Those complex needs would warrant a more comprehensive program with wraparound care. It may require some support, which might even eventually need a residential facility sometimes in order to provide that level of care and support. So, in special education, although we can carefully plan for a budget, we can't always predict the needs of the students, whether they're coming in or that they have a complex need that we can't just fit in a day program. The matched services also to try and keep community-based programs here. So, when I mean that, in SAG Harbor or in neighboring district. Some of the progress monitoring metrics that I've been looking at, we have outcome measures and some of them are, I'm starting to see some very positive outcomes. One of those is that we're projecting reduced out-of-district placement for next year. And we're going to be less than four percent of the students with IEPs that would be out of district next year. And also, a reduced initial CSE referrals. Right now, year-to-date, we're probably forty percent less initial CSE referrals.
So, does that mean that those two line items should be reduced?
Yes, they will be. What we're, what you'll see in the next slide is that we're right now in flux with switching. What we need to do is make sure that we have students in matched programming and some of those matched programming is up the island. And that's, and we have to create, that goes right, actually, right into the targeted professional development. So, when we build quality programs and develop those programs, we'll shift that. So, we have that transition, this is more of a transition year and you'll see a reduction in out-of-district tuition. And if I skip down, it goes to that shared services piece. So, I've been meeting with area directors, special education directors, and we've been able to establish some shared services pieces. And a couple of things that we've already been able to implement, one is the front door. We initiate that through SAG Harbor. The other is we provided a professional development on the East End on the difference between language acquisition and language disability. And that was hosted by East Hampton and available to all our area districts. And then, we've also now, with the transition coordination and the explanation, we've had a request from another district for a shared service for a transition coordinator. So, you'll see a shift in the salary line, because I'm going to move that was, that position I put in the grant to see if it was sustainable. And now, we're going to move a piece of that point two up into the A fund, so that we can actually share that service and bring revenue in. And that person would go to that district for a day to support transition coordination. And we've already developed that framework here, starting in SAG Harbor. Again, systems development and capacity building, so we have that. So, not only do we have that targeted professional development, but we're building it up in order to support our systems approach to instruction. So, if we go back up, these are all linked. For example, we have a reading focus group. We've been able to send folks to professional development at all levels, de-ger, administrator on reading, in order to clearly articulate that support with the new conversations around dyslexia and also to demonstrate how our current program addresses those students' needs by breakpoint. And then, finally, just this notion of minimizing fiscal impact. So, we want to do that without increasing costs. So, some of the specifics with instructional supplies, you'll see a little shifting and when you look at your line-by-line detail, you won't see it in the next slide. And basically, I originally did instructional supplies based on total enrollment. And now, it shifted based on the patterns that I saw on utilization. So, I've shifted the, so you don't see an increase, you just see a shift in re-allocation funds. Again, one thing to note in this budget is sometimes there's complex and unanticipated programmatic needs. So, residential placement, for example, is quite costly and can significantly increase the budget.
Could I just highlight that, because sometimes, folks don't realize, we are legally mandated to supply those services. If someone needs to be placed outside in a facility, those costs can run way up over six figures.
Yes.
So, and so, and it's hard to predict. So, that's why you can have kind of a pretty big swing if a few of those students come into the population of the district and we need to supply that, there's, that could be a quarter of a million dollars for two students.
It could, that could be a quarter million of dollars for one student.
For one student.
Yeah. One of the placements is a highly therapeutic placement, which, you know, could be a matched student, matched placement with quality professionals is two hundred and eighty thousand a year. So, that said, we'll move on to the budget side. You'll notice there's minimal changes. If you look at everything outside of the tuition line, which I'll go back to, Mr. Hayes, thank you for pointing that out, because that's what I was going to point out on this slide, on the mandated part is the tuition, you're going to see that increase right there in that tuition. And that would be the primary change in your percent change. So, when you look at that percent change, it's really based on mandated projection. Additionally, in tuition, not only do you have the mandated part, we try and make sure we have matched program for children, is you, it's unanticipated enrollment. So, you could have students with highly complex needs moving into the districts, into the district and you want to make sure that you're prepared for that influx. And sometimes, those things are very hard to prepare for, so you try and build in seats in certain programs and projected as best you can. So, that also reflects projected enrollment.
Do we get reimbursements from the state for those, for the cost of those services?
Yes, so basically, the state creates a threshold and we use the STAC, I think you've been familiar with, this is student tracking accountability system. And base, we go in and we track the students, because, and then they have a formula on a threshold. After we reach the threshold, we receive a percentage over that threshold for reimbursement. What we do get more reimbursement on is extended school year or summer school. So, if a student qualifies for twelve-month programming, then we can apply. It's a non-wealth-based reimbursement.
Right, so every student in that program is reimbursed for, regardless of financial status?
Of the district.
Of district financial status.
Of the district wealth, yes. Any questions?
To walk you through the technology budget that I'm proposing for the twenty twenty twenty-one school year. As we take a look at the technology budget, I just want you all to keep in mind that technology is a little unique in that it impacts every area of our operation. You know, from students to staff to administrators, even to a certain extent, our facilities and things of that nature. So, it's a little different than some of the other areas where, you know, it truly does encompass everything. So, as we move forward, I've broken down the various codes for you and I've showed you the comparisons year to year. And what I'd like to do now is to go line by line and try to explain to you that there are some changes and why there are some significant numbers that are different this year. So, our first code is a very basic code that is for conferences and professional development. Over the years, we've made adjustments to our employment agreements, in terms of employment, that enable us to reduce that code significantly from previous years. The central data processing contractual code, this is a code that contains a lot of ongoing services that we subscribe to, and I'll talk about those in the next slide in a moment. And you'll notice there's a significant increase this year over last year. And that, there's a number of reasons for that. Some of those reasons include the fact that we now have an additional internet connection going out or a fiber connection going out to our new facility. So, there's an additional cost associated with that. But while we were doing that, we took the opportunity to upgrade the connection between this building and the elementary school as well, to match what we'll have at the new building. So, we've got the latest of everything. So, there's some increased costs associated with that. And we also have some increased software subscription costs related to security. And while they, they are somewhat tied to the cyber incident, they're not entirely. And what I mean by that is we were already heading in the direction of rolling out these new products. These costs that we're looking at now, we would have been incurring them in this budget regardless of whether we had experienced that or not. Okay, so as we take a look at some of the costs that make this up, we have everything from the software that runs the communications boards behind us, our phone lines, our internet and phones, which are different. The Verizon POTS lines are our plain old telephone service, whereas LightPath is our internet and our actual phones that we use. Some of the terminology that you might not understand here, I'll go through that as best I can. If you have questions, I'm happy to answer it. Things like the Aruba Care, that refers to our wireless infrastructure. So, we have the service agreements in place for that infrastructure, so that if we have to contact the manufacturer, of course, for support or assistance, we can. And the same holds true with all of our Cisco equipment, our backend gear. So, that's why you're seeing Cisco SmartNet warranty. Those two names, the amp and umbrella, those do refer to the latest applications that we've brought on board to provide. that we've brought onboard to provide additional security measures. But again, we were doing that regardless. We have various kind of support services that we may encounter throughout the year. We have software that allows us to create virtual environments so that we can limit the amount of hardware that we have to have on premises. And that's where things like the VMware come in. We participate in the E-Rate program. E-Rate is a program where the purchases we make, we get reimbursed to a certain extent based on some of those purchases. We've also have included in here our district copier usage and supplies. And as you'll recall, we're now in year two of a four-year program with that. Additional things such as our NetApp and our AMC and our Veeam and all of our gaggle and things of that nature. Those are all backend systems that we need to make sure that we have support on so that, those are mission-critical systems. We want to make sure those are up and running at all times. And the bottom one refers to the visitor system at the front door of each building. So we have to, we have to have, we have a subscription service for that too because when you come in with your license, it's scanned against a database. We have to pay for that, for the annual updates for that. And I know you can't see this, I'm hoping you can see this on the printout, but I wanted to point out, this is just one small number that I just wanted to extract for you. Using this new software that we have, we had, on a regular basis, we have lots of requests for incoming traffic. Okay, that's just a part of doing business in the world. But I want you to notice that just in a one-month period, this software stopped 347,000 attempts that should not have been coming our way. So, you know, when we talk about having to pay for these things, there's a reason for it. We're not, you know, we are being very careful with the money and we're trying to make sure that we secure our environment the best we have. The unfortunate part of all this is, I've always been very honest with all of you, none of this guarantees anything, and that's the frustrating part. We're making every effort we can, but that certainly doesn't guarantee anything regarding the future. Our supplies line have generally held consistent. These are things that we use for the, you know, the technology department. Some of the administrative offices, mostly non-instructional in nature. The same is true, this really isn't an appropriate name for this category. We might look to change that in the future. It doesn't really refer to software for administrators. It refers to stuff that the tech department uses, such as, you know, network diagnostics and things of that nature. So maybe we'll look to change the name of the code if we can do that for a future year. And the BOSI services, we've spoken a little bit about that. I know that Lori mentioned that. Some of the services that we get from BOSIs are related to technology, things like e-school data, which is our student information system. We get our website, actually, the Aptigee and our communication and notifications and e-blast systems, all through BOSI. So by going through BOSIs, as was pointed out earlier, we do, some of these are eligible for state aid reimbursement. That comes back in the next year.
Can I ask just a quick question on that?
Sure.
I know it's not a huge sum of money, but it looks like in, let's say, one, two, or three years, from the beginning to the end there, it's grown by 30%.
Yeah.
Is that because we're doing more or because what we're doing is just costing more?
Both.
Both?
To a certain extent. But also, we're trying to more carefully align things, to put things and charge them to the appropriate code.
Right, so it's really just changing the budget code on expense.
Right, and just like if you look at the, and I'm going to show you the final slide is again all the codes. If you look from year to year, they vary greatly. Last year, we did a lot of hardware at the high school. So we put in a new system, a new audio system in both the gymnasiums. We're not doing that this year, so we move that money around. I'm trying to balance it year-to-year moving forward. But one of the things that we are going to need when we get to that side to talk about it is we should be looking at upgrading our firewall hardware here. So we try to work that in. But as far as the BOSIs goes, yes, we're doing a couple of things. We are making use of more and more services through them when it's appropriate because it's not always cost-effective for us to use the BOSI. Sometimes the additional fee that we pay for the BOSI service doesn't warrant, it's not warranted based on the amount of aid we'll get back. So when it doesn't make financial sense, we try not to do that. And often vendors will give us the BOSIs discount in that case anyway when we go directly to them. So we get the same pricing. The equipment lines at the elementary and the high school are fairly steady at this point in that, as you know, we've been replacing roughly a third of the computers on an annual basis, so we're going to continue to do that. We're getting to the point, though, where we have to start looking at some printers. And on a regular basis, there's a few classrooms per year where we're starting to replace smart boards and projectors like this with the interactive TVs. So that's budgeted for both buildings. And we also want to be constantly replenishing our supply of Chromebooks because they do get to a point where they can no longer be updated any longer. So we have to make sure that we stay on top of that. So it's essentially the same at the high school with the equipment. And on the backend, this is what I was talking about earlier, where, you know, this year I've included the replacement of the firewall, which is a significant investment. This code also encompasses any other data switches that are used for connectivity that we might need to replace, as well as the actual cost that we pay per month for the copiers, as opposed to the usage of the copier. And I'm sorry, just wanted to point out, we don't pay interest on that. We have a four-year plan with no interest. Okay, so taking a look at this code, this is more along the lines of what you were talking about before, what Mr. Malone was speaking of, where this is the code that encompasses all of the various programs that we're using for instructional purposes. And there's quite a few of them. And it is an ongoing process to try to stay relevant, to provide teachers with what they need. As I was pointing out earlier, we are very fortunate that, in general, when a teacher makes a good case for needing something, we find the resource to match it. And as, actually, just in the past week or so, I've been meeting with the individual teachers for a particular grade level at the elementary school all at the same time. And these are some of the discussions we're having about, you know, what is it that they need to do their job? Because in certain cases, it does make sense to standardize. And in other cases, as Mr. Malone pointed out, we need to give the teacher the flexibility to operate the way he or she chooses to. But the other thing that I'm continuing to work on is the effort to get the information out to the staff because it is definitely true that some staff members may not be aware of what we have available. We have something called the Staff Internet as well. On that Staff Internet, all of our technologies, resources are listed there and all the information. But that doesn't necessarily mean that information is making it to the teachers. So we will work on improving that. But you can see all the various packages for lots of different reasons that we're, lots of different subject areas that we're using at this point, including the iXL that you mentioned before, the Tinker for coding, as well as the WeVideo and the Lucid Press, which are products that we're using a little bit more and more now with which, with the students for working on creating both video, digital, online projects, as well as print. Okay, and when we take a look at the supplies line, we've held the line fairly consistent over the past few years. But I did put in a little bit of a buffer. We may go back and adjust this downward if possible, but I wanted to put this number out there now in anticipation of whatever we might need related to the Learning Center. But what we're also seeing is with the, with the use of the Chromebooks, at least certainly at the elementary school and to some extent here at Pearson, we are also seeing increased printing, which we were hoping we'd see more sharing of information digitally, but that's okay. The important part is that the machines are being used and we're actually enhancing the instruction. So we just want to account for that as well.
There's a question. Are you seeing more printing? Because we, there are some classes that are using less textbooks and then they're just printing more individual packets?
That may be the case. I don't think that there's a common trend of that happening, but I'm sure that's the case in certain situations. But I don't think they're printing out the course material. And I don't, you know, I don't have any hard, fast data to support it. I think it's printing out the work that they're creating, not necessarily. Because they're reviewing the information online for the most part, reading it. I don't think they need to print it out and have a hard copy. Whereas at the, at this level, anyway, I think it's more the work that's being produced by the students with the response to answering questions, writing, things of that nature.
Because I know that we had an initiative years ago of saying that, let's get more green, let's get less, more paperless, and it seems
Right, but
hard to do that.
Well, it's hard to do that because I, and I don't want to speak for the teachers, but I think with the kids doing more work now and being able to do more because of the technologies available to them, they want the output of that. So the teachers, especially at the younger age, many of them prefer to have the hard copy to be able to review. But we are working with the teachers to bring them up to speed on the ways that they can evaluate that work online without having to use so much paper. Okay, and this is just our typical, every year, we have to purchase, you know, licenses for all of our software. So that's with this code. This code went up slightly because of the Smart Notebook software being included, which is what the teachers use in the classroom for the instruction.
Can I ask you a question about that, Scott?
Sure.
On the previous slide, you said that we were replacing some of these projectors with those TVs. Those TVs don't use the Smart Notebook, correct?
They can't. The Smart Notebook's licensed to the computer, so the teachers that created all of their lessons using the Smart Notebook still need a license in order to project those lessons onto the classroom.
So they're still using those same files on the TVs?
Correct.
And they have the markers and everything?
Right, and not every teacher's using it, so it's on an as-needed basis that we're buying licenses because not every teacher is using the Smart Notebook. But there are teachers who've been here for years and years and have a great deal of work created in it. So we're continuing to support that for them. And there really isn't a perfect alternative to that at this point, anyway. As you might know, though, as Flash is being, you know, pushed out, the teachers are happy to come up with different resources, so we may start to see that drop off, anyway.
And then on the, the ship from the smart boards to the TVs, I know that because the TVs, that technology is relatively new. Smart boards have been around quite a bit longer. Are they seeing any sort of learning curve or glitches or? Are they pretty content with the TVs or are they finding them to be?
Well, I'm getting mixed feedback, but most of the teachers who have them are very happy with them. They just need some additional training because there's additional functionality associated with those that they didn't have with the typical smart board. So it's really just more initiative training. I don't have anybody who's unhappy with having made the move. But, you know, there are trade-offs to everything, you know, with, in terms of, you know, actually writing on them. It's not quite the same as writing on a smart board. But if you'll recall, when we went to smart boards, and I wasn't here when this district did it, but that's not quite the same as writing on a chalkboard or a dry erase board. So, you know, it's always changing. It's just a matter of getting used to some of the change.
And when we moved to smart boards, there was an onboarding process that took quite some time.
Right, but I think was, again, I wasn't here for that. That was probably more of a technological shift in general that was taking place. But now we're just replacing one tool with another. So it's really that the learning curve is in a significant
Are the smart boards kind of like going out?
The physical smart boards themselves, we have not bought any in all the years that I've been here. We've been moving in a different direction. But we're keeping the software because, you know, the teachers want that to be useful. So as I said, if you look around, you'll notice the codes vary somewhat from year to year, where we have higher costs for equipment some years and higher costs for services. So we're trying to balance it without breaking the bank and still providing everybody with all of the services and fully functional equipment and everything at their disposal. Any questions? Thank you very much.
Everybody logged in?
Yep.
All right, can I get a motion to call the business meeting?
Sure, moved.
Okay.
Okay, drop them.
I'm not logged in.
I put the exact same thing in tonight, six times, and the sixth time it got me. So.
Yeah, you can just put in your school email address and just
I did J-SO-B earlier. I gave you the whole
We're not extending the length of time before you have to be entered this
I haven't been prompted yet, yes.
Okay.
So I have, well, Susan left you. I have five yes and one opposed. Brian, opposed?
No.
You gotta go home.
All right. Let's all start with the flash.
He's trying.
Yes, can't do it unless we do it.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, and ever and ever.
Is there anyone here for public input one? If so, please come up to the podium. Good takers. President's comment, I don't have anything. So we can move, unless Ellie, did you have anything? Nope, all right, so we can go right to consent agenda. Get a motion to approve items 8.1 through 8.12.
Can we remove one item from the consent?
Sure.
I would like to remove 8.5.
I'm sorry, what number?
8.5.
Okay, and I have that as approval of replacement class?
No, it's Jennifer Bussam.
Okay, that is 8.4. So just so you know, that's, it's been, it's 8.4 now.
It shows us an 8.5.
Did you refresh?
Yeah.
Yes.
They're refreshed.
I'll refresh again, but as of 15 minutes ago, it was
I had it as 8.5.
It's still 8.5, but I just refreshed.
Yeah, okay, so I'm removing the Jennifer, Jennifer Bussam consultant agreement.
I'll make that To approve the consent items.
I'll second it.
Thank you.
Do you need to do it by hand because you changed it? I do.
This is really consent, yeah.
Yep. Thank you.
Action items, so why don't we just add that one as the first one?
Sure.
So can I get a motion to approve the former item 8.5?
Someone?
I don't know, second? I'll second it. Any discussion?
I mean, I wanted to remove it. I mean, we have a business administrator, we have a new assistant business administrator. We like enough to have Ellie, who's very competent, you know, with budgets, so I just don't see the need of hiring an additional consultant for that. I think it's something we can handle internally.
We felt at this particular time, with our knowledge of the history of all of the transactions, that it would be beneficial to make sure that all the details were brought up to speed. And as you know, the assistant business manager is new. He doesn't have the history of knowledge of the details. And, you know, since we're so close to the business process, we wanted to assure that we had all the history, the institutional history of the items so that in the budget planning, we knew to make it more efficient and more effective and more appropriate in analyzing the expenditures. And you noticed that we did reduce the budget by several hundred thousand dollars by going through each item with the history of what we had in the past and what we estimated so we could make more accurate predictions and have a budget line that was as effective and as manageable as possible.
So would you say that whatever nominal fee we're paying her on a daily basis, that she's been saving us that much in the budget?
We saved several hundred thousand dollars in just, in just
Just having her consult on this.
A few days to go through each item and see what we spent in the past and what the history was. And as was mentioned in some of the presentations, that we may have spent more in certain areas in the past, but knowing the reason for it But knowing the reason for it, we could then make a more informed decision that that particular situation wouldn't occur. Again, with my, we're making more accurate predictions based on history and so on to, to really be able to hone out estimates of future expenditures. And so, in a short period of time, we're able to reduce the expenditures considerably.
You know, I, I completely understand why we did this. And we started the budgeting processes, we've discussed, very, very late, much months later than what we should have. So, we've had a very condensed period of time. And it's just as much work. We probably have more work this year because we also now have another building with additional expenses. So, we were very pressed. It was not an ideal situation. I would hope that in the coming years, we don't have to keep bringing outside resources because we didn't used to have an assistant business official. That's a relatively new job. We used to do it without that position as well. So, we, we, you know, one of the reasons why we added that was to have more robust support. So, I understand the question. And I would just hope that we, as a district, can plan better for the coming years so that we're not in this position again.
And it was very temporary just to meet this time crunch and to be able to really use the history of the expenditures to make the best decisions we can.
Now, do you see extending that contract? Because I know a lot of times we put something that we have to revise.
No, we don't, no.
Because we need a district and our office and everything else.
That's why we limited the amount of time just to provide any additional particular responses for the history of why do you do this? And any changes that might come up to be able to make sure that we can do as efficiently. We limited the timeframe just to the budget development.
I think this just goes to show how important institutional knowledge is, right? It's, I mean, you've been here for two months. Lori has been here for a little over a year, and she does brand new. So, I just think it's, you know, it's great that she's willing to do it. It's great that you identified that, that you could use the help. Hopefully, we won't need it in future years as we have institutional knowledge. And hopefully, we'll have some continuity of staffing over the long term, you know, so that we don't need to add last-minute institutional knowledge.
Now, we need to start months earlier, so we're not in a scratch.
I have to add, if I could, that, you know, we assured a person for almost, you know, six, seven months. So, that also adds into a whole lot of backlog of work that needs to be done and deadlines to be met. So, it's, you know, it also goes, an extra hand with somebody who's had knowledge is a big help.
No, I understand, you know. At the same time, we have to be careful because taxpayers, you know, complain that we spend too much money and stuff, maybe we don't need. That's why I just wanted to bring it up. But if you think, you know, it's something we absolutely need, then, you know.
So, this short period of time.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
It's unanimous, thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve action item nine point one?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
It's unanimous, thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve item nine point two?
Some.
Second.
Any discussion?
I think it's painful to get these walk-ons late in the day. I know this was, there's a reason for it, but it was just the reason why we just needed to fill the bill this. Yeah. My good thanks for stepping up.
Okay, unanimous, thank you.
Can I get a motion to approve the third read and adoption of policy number seven four five oh?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
At the last meeting, I raised a couple of points. And one of them, I think there was a takeaway to potentially modify language on it. Was it modified? Because I didn't see it for this, for this version. It was?
So, if you look on the attachment, it says third read?
Yeah, I see it. It's just not redlined there.
Oh, it should be all the way, it's all the way under the general requirements. Second paragraph or second bullet. The bullets kind of disappeared on that version.
Yeah, it's true.
Oh, you know what? There's a long red line next to it. But it looks like it's almost a smudge. Is that the way, what you're talking about?
You might, you might have it in, in reviewing. You might be showing go-to-all markup instead. You might have simple markup.
I just opened it the way it was. I didn't open it in the need format.
And the title says third read on the document?
It does.
Okay.
You have to third read.
Yep.
It's okay.
I can pull them out if you'd like.
So, you said it's money's raised from a fundraiser. That's the paragraph that's been changed?
Yes.
Track changes.
Yeah.
I, it, that's how it opened?
Yeah.
There we go. All right, great. Um, that was not, that was not the point that I, that I raised.
Yeah, so I think what the, there were two, two takeaways that I took from some of the input that we discussed in the committee. One was the option to be able to, we had discussion of, does the fundraising benefit all? So, no matter what, the equitable funding, it's distributed. And then raised the question of getting folks to come and attend those fundraisers and some folks who are doing other things that, and they should be going to the fundraiser. And that we should kind of look at it as an individual, whether or not you participated or not. So, when we are looking at changing that, like an individual benefit, then it just needs prior approval. And we thought at the superintendent level would be appropriate because of, we wanted to address any kind of, we wanted to make sure we establish consistent criteria. Because some of the concerns we had were just, you know, limiting access and type of thing.
Does that make sense? I thought what you were, what the committee was going to revise was the point of when we talked about that they weren't allowed to solicit at all during school.
That's the second point.
That was the one that I thought was getting changed. I didn't realize this was. So, but, so that, is that addressed, the change addressed?
Yeah, so we also had that discussion as well. And we went through, looking at the prior policy, and it wasn't the prior policy. And it is something that we have to do by regulation. So, that, but the, and then we looked at the definition of direct solicitation because there was a question about that, and it made sense to us. So, if we, we felt like it was enough that we didn't have to kind of put the definition of direct solicitation in.
So, the example that I gave, would that be in violation of the policy?
So, can you give me an example of that?
Sure. I mean, and, and this was described to me as things that do happen. And I, I'll use this kind of in the, the subjective. It's the cafeteria, the club, I'll say robotics. This is just a abstract example. Is trying to raise money and they're selling sweatshirts and T-shirts. And, you know, I turned to my friend and said, hey, you're going to buy a sweatshirt and a T-shirt to support my club. That would be against policy.
Yeah, direct one-to-one solicitation would be against the policy.
Because I just think that that's relatively common. So, right, I mean, that's, and that's a natural thing to happen. So, I, I'm not saying that there's going to be the policy piece walking around the cafeteria, you know, giving out tickets to kids. But I just think that we have to be realistic. Or if we really want to prevent that, then there needs to be clear communication that that's not permitted based on policy so that we're not setting up a scenario where-
Right, so-
People don't understand that they're violating it.
Right, and, and so also too, there's, there's also regulation around what can actually be inside the cafeteria. So, whether or not there's actually tables inside the cafeteria.
Well, I'm not talking about setting up a, with swag or anything.
Right, right.
I've, I've walked into gym class or wherever it is about, hey, we're trying to raise money.
Yeah.
That's different than saying, hey, we're having a pancake breakfast at the firehouse.
That's right.
Somebody, if you get a chance, we'll buy.
That's right.
You know, during the course, we do a lot less of this. We used to, you know, sell lots of tchotchkes to everybody. We do less of that. But I'm just saying, I, that's what I thought might, might have been clarified. But it sounds like the regulations require it. Then it just seems like we need to be transparent about what that means.
Yeah.
And I don't think that people would understand it based on what's written here.
That makes sense to me. And I think that's where, you know, when we look at the definition and maybe we, when we do the dissemination piece of the cycle. So, as we go through policy, remember that the NISBA policy cycle at the end is the dissemination piece. And maybe during that dissemination piece, we can attach some further explanations.
So, club advisors and coaches would understand and class advisors that when you do fundraising, this is how you can do it. And this is what is not permitted based on, or it's prohibited based on district policy, which mostly is based on law and code. So, as long as we, as long as we communicate effectively around it, then it would work.
Agreed.
Any other discussion? Just waiting for Brian. Get you out of the missing.
Slow over here. Takes a long time to come around the table.
They're at the end of the network.
We need to give Scott more money. Come slow to this side.
Can I get a motion to approve the third read and adoption of policy number seven four eight oh?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. I get a motion to approve the first read of policy sixteen thirty.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion?
What changed from the previous policy? I was just unclear on that.
Yeah, so we just added a reference to the student voter registration, preregistration for voters under eighteen.
That was, nothing was changed, right?
That's it.
Okay.
And now you can register when you're sixteen. You couldn't legally do that before.
You still can't vote till you're eighteen, but you can start.
Correct, but you can register earlier, yeah.
It's unanimous, thank you. Can I get a motion to approve the first read of policy sixteen thirty one?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion?
Just was unclear as to what changed on this one, about voting machines.
I'm sorry?
Just the same, same thing on the voting machine policy that changed?
So, on the voter she, voting, voting machine policy, if you'll scroll through, anything that's red was changed and you can see to the right, there should be track changes. I don't know if you can, so there was a rip.
Thanks to Victoria for making all these changes and noticing them.
No.
I have a couple of questions on some of the changes, but I'm going to email them to, before the second reading.
Yep.
Okay.
And this way, the, this way whoever from the policy committee or administration wants to answer the Capitol.
Yeah, our next policy committee meeting is March twenty seventh. I'll put the plug out there, so if anybody wants to attend. And anybody else who has any ideas or things we'd like to discuss regarding the first read? Please feel free to ask them.
Policy committee's been busy, eh?
The twenty-sixth, I think, right?
I'm sorry, twenty-sixth. Thank you for the correction.
Okay. I'm just waiting for Chris to come through.
Oh, I'm sorry. I had the window open with the policy. And so, I can see the plaque up, I felt, I see.
Okay, that's unanimous, thank you. All right. Is there anyone here for public input number two?
I'll give some. Dominic up here. Two hundred medicines, sorry. Can't remember if I'm supposed to tell you that, but I-
It's helpful.
Now we know where you live.
How are you? So, normally I come to these meetings and I talk about two things, which is facilities and superintendent search. So, let me start with superintendent search. I hope it's going really well. I'm looking for a real positive outcome when we're all done. And I'd like to address something that Chris Tyson brought up, and you brought up. Institutional history and the heavy lifting of thinking back, are we, you know, meeting our goals here? And I'm looking around the room. And I've lived in the district fifteen years now. And a lot of the faces are really new over those fifteen years except these guys. And I would encourage you-
You're calling you old.
No. I'm not calling you old. I'm calling you- I'm going to call you.
It's mutual eyes. I'm sorry. And Levity, we've been here since six and we've still got a long way to go.
I know, I know. Be quick. Really engaged, and I always enjoy hearing what you have to say. Because I leave here much more knowledgeable than my kingdom, which is a great thing. But while you're out looking for your new CEO or your new superintendent, you might want to ask them how they manage with some of these similar issues that you're addressing here now. And one of them might be, what do you do with institutional history? How do you solve the gaps with thoughtful people leaving over a number of years? Because that's going to happen. There's going to be turnover of everyone on this, some people on this side of the table. And these people here are going to turn over. God bless these principals here. I've been here a long time, right? And so, I think you need to be thoughtful about that as you move ahead with your search. Likewise, in terms of your facility, there's this nice new facility that's going to come online that I, we have all helped pay for. It would be nice if some of the revenues that we might get from it were being talked about and generated and discussed for this budget session. All right, and by that I mean, it's going to come online before you might be teaching people in it. Maybe there's people out there who want to use it this summer. And you might need to have policies to allow them to use it. You might need pieces of paper that say, hey, this is what it is. It's got fifteen bathrooms, three offices, full auditorium, super internet, brand-new sound system. You know, you need to have that. Some of you are in real estate. You need to know that those people want to have that takeaway when they come. And you want to have it prepared for them. Right? So, my third thing is, very quickly, is I thought the presentation from the administrators was great. I think there needs to be a dialogue. Maybe it's something that happens with the new superintendent and at a retreat. But where are the gaps in the education? Are the kids coming up from elementary school meeting the needs of the middle school? Likewise, is middle school sending the kids with the right technique, skill set to the high school? And are the families who aren't being part of the IB program are being, are leaving well-supported? Because it appears the IB program might be taking a big chunk of money. Just guessing. I haven't seen it written down. But we need to be meeting every need from every kid. That's all.
Thank you.
Please come up.
Hello again. I'm Erin Casada. You need our my address?
I have, you're right.
Twenty-five South Drive in North Haven. So, I spoke with you a little while back and asked you to redo the plaque in the, in the main lobby. And I'm delighted to see that you approved the expenditure and it will be done. I just want to tell you that our grandchildren think that, that Bob, my husband, is getting some kind of award from Washington and some medal or something. So, they're so excited. When I bring them to see the plaque, I hope they're still excited about it. But I do want to thank you very much, and it means a lot to us.
Anyone else for public input? Can I get a motion to convene into executive session for the purpose of, why is it not coming up? Discussing a legal matter.
Are we discussing, are we discussing any personnel matters? I think we just have to be really careful about not just throwing a fine thing out there, but-
I think the, I think it would be proposed or potential litigation matters.
Okay, and Con, and we're talking about contracts as well?
And the contract.
And contracts. I just want to-
Yeah, that's it. Any other matter and contract?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?